Page rule. Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Larry Clay and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members are Ryan Bissonnet and Phil Gosh. Our Deputy Secretary Treasurer today is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territories of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Inishna Bag, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submission in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance and will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share a presentation submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must first fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal. Only the applicant, the minister of municipal affairs and housing, specified persons and public body are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision. Today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation of desire. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the presentation. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the committee. Then individuals either in support or opposed will be invited to speak. Generally, we call first on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speaker. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, oh, sorry, any declarations of interest in the afternoon session? See none? Any deferral requests for the afternoon?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Item number 18, 377 to 379 Manning Avenue. File numbers B0049/25TEY, A1000/25TEY, A1001/25TEY, and A0313/25TEY. We do have the agent online, and we can deal with this matter at this time.
Great, thank you. I'll read this item into the record. This is 377 to 379 Manning. This is requesting consent to sever the property into three residential lots. Also to construct a new three-story detached fourplex with a front and rear third-story terraces, a rear second-story Juliet balconies, a rear ground floor deck and a rear basement walkout, also to convert the existing rear two-story ancillary building into a laneway suite. There'll be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. That was part one. Part two and three are to convert the pair of existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached buildings on parts two and three into a pair of three-story semi-detached buildings, each containing four units, by constructing the front and rear three-story additions. Front third-story terraces, rear terraces with staircase on the first, second, and third stories, a front porch and rear basement walkouts. Also to convert the existing rear two-story ancillary building into a laneway suite and demolish a portion of the new landscaped area. No parking spaces will be provided on the lot. There'll be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. The main building on part two and the adjacent semi-detached building located on the north of budding lot in part three is currently reviewed as a one-eight unit apartment building on the two lots. Committee has before a copy of the draft, our plan revised, our plan of survey received July 21st. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations revised, site plan, floor plans, and elevations received July 21st. Redline public notice. We have three photographs of the subject property covering letters from the agent and a deferral request from the agent. We have email correspondence from community planning and staff reports from engineering and construction services and urban forestry. We do have the agent?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent and no registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I blinked there for a minute. Can you guys hear me? I had a bit of a blip.
Oh, yes. Mr. Bronskill.
Good afternoon. Just for the record, last name's Bronskill, first initial D for David, 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400, Toronto, Ontario. Here as agent for the applicant, and just confirming, we are requesting to defer these four applications, please.
And the reason being?
I'm going to be interesting for a minute, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to make sure I don't panic, Sabrina, with what I'm about to say through you, Mr. Chair. We are going to revise the notice just to pick up some additional parts that are being shown on the application that would include some easements, should the committee see fit to grant the consents and create these lots for which what is frankly a really interesting, complicated but interesting little rental project. The reason I don't want to, through you, Mr. Chair, panic, Sabrina, is the provisions, interestingly, in Section 45 and Section 53 are a little bit different about notice. But, that being said, they're worth a read at some point, but that being said, I do agree with staff that the most prudent thing to do is to defer to make sure that we issue a revised notice so that the easements are expressly listed.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And through you, Mr. Chair, we are able to schedule this to the August 27th hearing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward. Let's go into committee. Can I get a motion to defer, Phil?
Sure, happy to defer this to, for those reasons, to let the easements be indicated.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gosh to approve, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor. You have your deferral, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to item number 19. This is 589 and 591 Annette Street. This is an application to maintain the existing two-and-a-half-story mixed-use semi-detached One dwelling unit occupying the basement, one office unit located on the first story, and one dwelling unit occupying the second and third stories, with a front porch with stairs, a rear second-story deck with stairs, and a rear third-story deck. No parking spaces will be provided. The application is also to permit, that's either one of 589 or 591, this application also is to permit and maintain the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached triplex building containing three residential dwelling units with a front porch, the stairs, a rear second-story deck with stairs, and a rear third-story deck. No parking spaces will be provided. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, presentation materials from the agent, we have email correspondence from community planning and from transportation services, and a staff report from engineering services.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent here in person, no registered speakers for this item. This is also joined with a technical severance application. Two lots merged on title, so the technical severance has been approved.
Okay. All right, sir. Good afternoon. Name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Melvin, address is 181 Annette, I'm the agent for the hour.
Okay, it is a little bit on the complicated side, so why don't you just take us through your application?
Certainly, I'd like to. Have you heard from Sabrina that there is becoming severance application? So, severance application is to reestablish two lots on title and to establish easements?
Thank you very much, my apologies. The severance application, technical in nature, to reestablish two lots that merged along with easements that merged. The variances themselves, I'll start by saying there are no physical changes whatsoever contemplated by these variances. So if you go to the presentation material, I think that very accurately and helpfully illustrates what is being proposed. I'm on page two of the presentation materials. Let's go to the next page. There you go. Okay, so starting at 589 Annette Street, which is the conveyed lot, there are effectively two variances that are being sought. The first is to permit residential uses below a non-residential use. So typically, oh, sorry, I messed up. Let's start with the retained lot, 589. That's the blue over on the right. So this is a building that has residential, commercial, and then residential. It's a commercial Oreo, you could call it that. Typically, the zoning bylaw doesn't permit a lower-level residential unit. We're permitting to legalize that lower-level residential unit. Again, it's already existing, and so no physical changes there. For parking, we are seeking to legalize the zero parking rate. Again, there's no parking that's currently being used by any of these tenants. I think the intent and purpose of parking bylaws typically are to make sure supply meets demand. I think we've demonstrated that that is the case here. The commercial unit doesn't need parking, and the, especially on this street of Annette, this area of Annette, if you're familiar with it, very pedestrian-friendly. It's a great, great street for people to walk on and having some commercial uses there as of right, but will certainly contribute to the neighborhood. No need for parking there, and the resident good access to transit, no need for parking. And that's why we're seeking to legalize the zero parking requirement. Moving on to the conveyed lot, so we're over to the left for the orange. The first is to, although a residential use is permitted in this zone, and parking, an apartment building, a mixed-use building, and townhouse are all types of building forms that are permitted, a triplex is not. I, you know, that might just be a bit of a nuance in the bylaw to not allow that specific form, keeping in mind a much more intensive apartment building form would be permitted. These buildings have existed for a long time. The triplex form, it fits in quite well with the neighborhood, and so we think just establishing this triplex use is perfectly appropriate and meeting the four tests. And then finally, similar to the blue side, we are seeking to establish the zero parking requirement. Again, this one is fully tenanted. The tenants, they walk to transit, they ride their bikes, there's no need for established parking. And so, once again, I think that the parking demand meets supply as demonstrated, and so we think that it's appropriate and meets the four tests of the Planning Act. You'll see there's another variance on the notice that's at the top, which basically says if there is a consent to sever lots, you need to comply with the zoning bylaw. And so that's why I focused on the latter two variances, because really the first one's not quite a variance, because if, I think the committee's satisfied that the substantive variances are in meeting with the four tests, then the consent can be approved. A bit of a chicken-and-the-egg situation, almost like an advisory note in a way, but if the two variances that are substantive are approved, then the first one certainly should be as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I thank staff for their time, and for my friend Andrew Everton, who's back there, did a lot of hard work lifting on the file. I know I got to be the face, but these other folks, you do a lot of work in the background, so thank you to Andrew.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions, Phil?
So, the reason why triplex isn't permitted here is because it's CR rather than R, right?
Right.
Now, fourplex even would be permitted anywhere in an R-zone.
That's right.
So, we've almost gotten to a situation where these-
We've moved ahead on one side and stayed back on another.
Yeah, exactly. Somewhere that would have been even more ahead is now behind. Okay, so that, that's what I suspected. My other question is just more of a point of interest you may know or may not know, but, you know, there's reference to title having been merged. At one time, these were semis. Title then was merged, and now you're taking them apart. Do you know why title ever was merged?
Yeah, so in 2005, when two of the same, when the property comes into registered ownership under the same person, the properties merge. And I think it was actually just an error, so-
Oh, I see.
If I'm looking back, we have the chain of title in there somewhere. I think it might have been an inheritance that occurred. Someone took ownership. A lawyer who was involved didn't do their due diligence to make sure that they didn't properly stay separate.
I see, it was just something that was automatic under-
It happens at law, that's right.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Ryan, you okay? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Let's go into committee, fairly straightforward. Phil?
Sure, yeah, happy to move it through you, Mr. Chair, to the Secretary Treasurer, since the consent's been already dealt with. I can just do one motion for it all?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You can do one motion for the two minor variance applications.
Okay.
I don't see any conditions. The consent conditions will be part of that.
I have engineering conditions, is there not?
Those are for-
Those are part of the consent?
Part of the consent, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so with that clarification, I will move to approve all of the variances for both A and B.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gosh to approve, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you for coming down. Item number 20 is 14 to 16 Hammersmith. This is seeking to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots and to establish and create two new easements or rights of way. The application is to maintain the existing two-story semi-detached fourplex, also to the existing ancillary building, which is a carport, be maintained and unaltered. The other part, part two, is to maintain the existing two-story semi-detached fourplex, also the existing ancillary building, which is also a carport and parking space, will be maintained and unaltered. This carport is partially located on the south of budding lands. Committee has before a copy of the, our draft plan of survey, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, five photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, planning justification report. We have email correspondence from community planning and transportation services, and a staff report from engineering services. There is correspondence and concern from two, 12, two items of correspondence from 12 Hammersmith Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online and two registered speakers online.
Are they from the same property?
No, one from number 18, and then one from number 12.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good afternoon.
Zachary Sotomayor, address 1 Dundas Street West, Suite 2500.
Thank you, sir. We have some folks who have some interest in this application. We'll need a presentation, please.
Sure. So I think I have some presentation materials. Is that what's up right now? Great. Okay, so this application is to sever the existing fourplex property into two separately conveyable lots, creating two legal duplexes instead of one four-unit property. Now, we're not proposing any physical changes to the building, no new construction, no additions, no changes to the higher footprint. The structure will remain exactly as is, with an internal boundary line division to reflect the severance. Now, the goal here is to create two more manageable or accessible forms of ownership, rather than one large building, two duplexes who function as semi-detached homes, you know, a form that's easier for buyers to afford, finance, or maintain. This approach, you know, supports the city's goal of increasing housing flexibility in established neighborhoods without adding density or altering the look or feel of the neighborhood. If we can go to page two on that presentation. So the proposed severance is not a straight split down the middle. Instead, we're proposing one rectangular lot and one L-shaped lot, and this configuration is intentional. So it allows both lots to retain access to at least one parking space in the rear yard. And to make that work, 14 Hammersmith, which is the smaller rectangular property, will continue to use the existing mutual right-of-way on the north side of the property. And then we're looking to create a new right-of-way over parts five and six, and that's just to create access to its parking and to create a turn radius for exit. Now, 16 Hammersmith would continue, or sorry, that's the L-shaped lot, that would continue using the mutual right-of-way on the north side, again, to reach its parking area in the very rear. Now, if we go to page three. This page shows an overview of the immediate area or the median neighborhood. The subject property is highlighted in blue, and it's surrounded by nine comparable properties, all with similarly shaped lot divisions and nearly identical building types. So each of these examples relies on a shared right-of-way for rear yard access, just like what we're proposing here. Now, if we can go to page four. We've included photos of the property and the five of the physically closest comparable properties. Again, building types are virtually identical. These properties have been severed into semi-detached buildings, following the same L-shaped configuration, and all rely on one shared sideyard driveway for access to the rear yard. Now, if we go to page five. We've included a chart that proposes, or that compares the proposed lot frontage and lot area for both the rectangular and the L-shaped lot, and we compare those against the 10 comparable properties shown earlier. So while the minor variances are required for the lot frontage and lot area, you'll see proposed figures do fall within the range of what already exists in the neighborhood. Now, in total, 14 Hammersmith requires 15 variances, 16 Hammersmith requires 13 variances. Aside from frontage and lot area, which are the result of the severance, the remaining variances are all virtually pre-existing, right? We're not creating anything new. So again, just important to underscore that most of these variances will continue to exist regardless of the decision made today, and that's because the structure hasn't changed. So at the end of the day, this application is to create more accessibility in an oversized building type while following a longstanding division pattern in the neighborhood. Now, we'd like to make one final point. Variance number 12 for 14 Hammersmith and variance number 10 for 16 Hammersmith, they relate to a reduced sideyard setback for two vinyl sheds. So that's a reduction from 0.9 meters to 0.0 meters. Now, these sheds are not permanent structures, and after some discussion with the south neighbors, that would be 12 Hammersmith, we are prepared to remove them. So in other words, we'd like to withdraw those two variance requests, and we're in the committee's hands as in the best procedural way to reflect that. So if it's helpful, the removal of the sheds can be included as a condition of consent and approval of the remaining variances, should the application proceed in that direction. That's it in terms of our presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina, I think the best is to amend the application, remove those variances?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have speakers on this?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Let's hear from the owner at number 18 Hammersmith first.
Hello, Ms. Lee.
Dona Lee at 18 Hammersmith.
All right, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Okay, I'll only need 30 seconds. I was just curious to understand why the partition is made at the rear of 16 Hammersmith into parts five and six. But I think that question's sort of already been answered.
Okay.
The partition behind my building at 18 Hammersmith is just part seven, and it's just one big space, so I was curious as to what, why there's a difference behind 16 Hammersmith.
Okay, we will, we'll ask the agent to clarify that. Thank you. Okay?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the owner at 12 Hammersmith.
Good afternoon.
I'm off mute now. Yeah, no, I spoke to Zachary earlier today.
Sorry, sir, sorry, just don't mean to interrupt, but could you just give us your name and address?
Yes, of course. James Alexander, 12 Hammersmith Avenue.
Okay.
Sorry about that. My wife and I were concerned with the two items that have been withdrawn because of the access to the sheds in question, and now that they've been withdrawn, we have no objection.
Okay, great, thanks very much. I don't think we need to go back. Oh, yes, we do. We want to go back to the agent to address the first speaker's question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so originally, it was just part five that was going to be the created easement for access for 14 Hammersmith. And then after submission of the application, they recommended that part six be added, just to add additional room for in and out. So that's why it is in two parts rather than just one single part.
Okay.
If we were to have redone it, it probably would have just formed one part.
Right. Okay, great. Pal, any questions? Nope, okay, let's go into committee. Seems like a fairly straightforward, technical request.
Yeah, and I'll move a motion to approve. I just am missing if there are any conditions. I don't think so from planning.
Engineering conditions.
Engineering, okay.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So there's the standard consent conditions and then engineering consent.
And this is as amended?
Yes. Approve as amended with the engineering condition, please.
Okay, seconded by a motion by Mr. Bissonnet to approve, seconded by Mr. Gosh, all in favor. You have your approval, sir, thank you. Item number 21 is 1128 Queen Street East. This is an application to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building by constructing a rear two-story addition with second-story balcony and exterior stairs. There is one non-residential unit on the ground floor, one residential unit on the second level, which we've maintained. The existing rear one-story detached garage will be demolished, there'll be a one-car parking pad abutting Vermont Avenue. Committee has before a copy of the minutes from the December 11th, 2024 public hearing, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and a covering letter from the agent. We have email correspondence from transportation services and correspondence in opposition from four Birch Mount Avenue.
Through, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online as well as one registered speaker.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, fellow committee members. My name's Roshan Thuru. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services, Inc., located at 87 Skyway Avenue, Suite 200, and I'm the agent and planner for this application.
Great, sir. We'll need a presentation. Someone is waiting to speak to this item, and could you just also just remind the panel what's changed since the deferral, and if anything, since December?
Yes, no problem, Mr. Chair. So this application was previously deferred at the December 11th committee hearing. As planning staff had concerns regarding the proposal, planning staff requested that the rear main wall of the second-story addition be aligned with the rear main wall of the building to the north. We worked with planning staff and made this change, and as noted within my formal request to reschedule this application, planning staff are now satisfied with the revised proposal that is in front of the committee today. The revised proposal has improved two of the previously identified variances, and a new variances associated with the setback to the rear stairs was identified. And the proposal is to construct a rear two-story addition to accommodate a new kitchen for the existing restaurant use on the ground floor and for a living and dining room area on the second floor for the existing apartment unit. Regarding variance one, the proposed setback is 4.06 meters, and the existing setback to the garage is 3.29 meters. Therefore, the proposed setback is to the addition is an improvement of 0.77 meters. A reduction in the setback is being requested to accommodate the kitchen for the restaurant use on the ground floor, and the proposed setback will have little to no impact further than what the bylaw already contemplates, and will still allow for space for maintenance, access, area for stormwater infiltration, and provide adequate separation distance from the commercial use to the residential use to the north. Regarding variance two, the proposed eaves will encroach 3.46 meters into the rear yard, and this is a result of variance number one. The proposed roof eaves will still provide space for access, maintenance, and will have little to no impact further than what the bylaw already contemplates, and it is important to note that the proposed roof is a flat roof design, so it's, it would be easier to maintain the eaves from the subject property. Regarding variance three, through discussions with the architect, is my understanding that the- the proposed rear stairs are a requirement under the building code, and the intent of this setback is in large part to ensure safety, access, and separation between structures and lot lines. And in this case, the stairs do not present any significant obstruction or hazard to the laneway, in my opinion. And the reduction still maintains a physical separation to the lot line, which, in my opinion, is acceptable in tight urban contexts. Based on the justification provided in my presentation, is my opinion that the proposal meets a four test under section forty-five-one of the Planning Act and represents good planning. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee or the neighbor may have. Thank you.
Great, sir. Maybe you can clarify for the panel, there is a letter from Transportation in our file, which implies that you're converting the garage to habitable space, but however, from the project description, you're demolishing that garage.
That's correct. We are demolishing the garage for the addition.
Right, so Transportation's email is not accurate.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, and I would like to touch base regarding their email as well. They did note that a parking pad isn't permitted for residential use. However, after they issued this correspondence, I did reach out to them, and they did note that a commercial parking pad may be feasible. However, as the committee knows, that that would be dealt through a parking pad permit application with Transportation staff after the committee process.
Right. Okay, thank you. Maybe we can go to our speaker?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. If we bring up that Transportation report or email, it talks about the fact that they wouldn't even be able to accept an application for front yard parking, and so if the committee is to approve, it would be done on the condition.
Restoring a curb?
Of restoring the curb cut, that's what it looks like.
Yeah.
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair, my client is agreeable to that condition, and if they did want to proceed with the commercial parking pad, again, that would be a separate application after the committee process.
Right, so if you were successful, then you wouldn't necessarily have to remove the curb cut.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Our speaker?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the owner at four Burt Mount Avenue.
Hello.
I was asked to wait on.
Sorry, sir, I'm just going to interrupt you there for a second. There's a lot of noise coming in the background. Okay. Can I get your name and address, please?
Hold on, I'm not the person for this. I need to go get them.
All right. Hello.
Hi. I'm sorry, I've been waiting on the, my telephone, that's why I couldn't respond.
No worries.
My name's Gustavo.
Okay.
And I live at four Burt Mount.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. So basically, I just wanted to sort of thank you for the committee to take, you know, time to listen to my grievance here. The issue is that, in my understanding, right, we have two, maybe more variances, but requests for variance, that would affect us directly. One would be that the garage that is dropped and re-erected would be a two-story building, and what that would do, if basically, if you have the pictures in front of you, it would impede the sun that comes into our kitchen every morning. The other issue that we see is that the existing building, there's a request to set back the building a couple meters, eating into the laneway, and it not only eats into the laneway, it adds a footprint to the building's land, right? And what that would do is essentially the exact same thing, it just eats away at our ability to, well, see the green space, the trees that are in front of the existing garage, and also block, significantly block the sunlight that we receive every morning. We are all in favor of helping, allowing our neighbors the ability to improve their property. However, when it comes at the expense of our, you know, what we agreed to, what we, myself and my wife agreed to when we purchased four Burt Mount, we feel that the way that the property is being designed to be, following the proposed construction, it will significantly affect how we can experience our living space. And so, you know, I just, you know, I strongly urge the committee to reject the variance application, well, specifically the variances that I enumerated, that being not the falling of the garage, but the second floor addition to the garage, one, and two, the, you know, the setting back of the existing building, eating away at the laneway, that in fact, the properties from, I think, what is it, thirteen, what is it, thirteen, yeah, eleven thirty Queen Street East to eleven forty Queen Street, it would affect all of our properties, specifically though ours on four Burt Mount, because of how it would block out, block out the sun and so forth. So that's, that's, those are our grievances, and we again strongly urge the committee to reject those specific variance proposals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any questions, the speaker? Let's go back to the agent.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank the neighbor for providing his comments on the proposal. So to kind of provide some responses to the comments made, as previously noted, the proposed addition, specifically the second floor, was cut back, right? So now the proposed second story is aligned with the building addition, building addition to the north, and that was done at the request of planning staff to solve issues such as privacy and, to provide privacy, to solve privacy concerns, sorry. And in terms of the setback, I would note that if planning, if staff could please pull up the site plan, there is a gray dashed line which shows the current building footprint for the, of the garage, the current garage. So the actual proposed addition will actually be set back point seven seven meters away, so it would actually be an improvement. And again, I did cover all my justification within my presentation. I would just note that the proposed addition will provide additional commercial space for the restaurant on the ground floor and additional living space for the existing apartment building on the second floor. So it's my opinion that the proposal does meet the four tests and represents good planning, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Just about this, the rear lot line setback issue. So it looks like the actual addition is within the dotted line, but the stairs to access that apartment unit are actually going to encroach a little further than the existing garage. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. And again, according to the architect, it's my understanding that the proposed stairs was a requirement under the building code, and I would note that I'm not aware of any other residents who use that laneway that have any concerns or issues.
Do you know if that is a city-owned laneway? Because it looks like it only goes in a few properties, so I'm just.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not definitively sure. I'm just looking at the city maps.
That's fine, thanks.
It looks like it serves as the rear commercial on Queen, right?
Yeah, for just a short piece of that block.
Okay, anything further? Okay. All right, let's go into committee.
Sure, I'll start us off. I'm sympathetic to number four, their concern that this will affect their sunlight in their kitchen. You can see that there's a nice window that faces in that direction, and there might be an effect, but if I analyze whether that impact is a minor one, I think it is a minor one. Unfortunately, changes just the nature of being in a city. In terms of the setback from the laneway, because the lane is so short, only deals with these businesses who all would have received notice of this application, I think if there was a serious concern from the others that use this laneway, they would be here. And I sort of take Transportation's email as them also not really having a concern, because frequently we see them asking for some land to be added to the more major lanes, and I think this one, they're just treating as something a little lesser than. So for those reasons, I think the application is minor. I commend the applicant on addressing planning's concerns from earlier that led to the deferral. I'd find it approvable.
I should have asked the agent of this, but I'm just looking at the Google Maps. There's a rather large tree right at the edge of the property, and I don't see any forestry conditions. Can I just beg your indulgence, go to committee, can I just ask, can I just ask the agent, sir, there is quite a large tree right next to where it looks like you're proposing your addition.
Yes.
Has there been any contact with forestry on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I haven't had any correspondence with forestry this time around, but when it was previously scheduled, they did not raise any issues. They just noted that it would require a permit for removal, and as the committee knows, any city-owned tree will require permits, so my client would need to go through that process.
Don't we typically have a condition when they need a permit to remove? What number is that?
If it's a private tree, then it would be condition number two.
I think he said it must be city-owned video.
Condition number one.
So I think out of an abundance of caution, maybe even though it's not in our package, I think maybe a recommendations on effect might be prudent?
Sure.
Bill, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I hadn't moved yet, but I tend to agree, actually, because it looks like that's something that just might have been missed here, and they can always waive the condition if it's not.
Yeah. Okay, back in committee again, so do you want to move that?
Sure, yeah, so I will move it then. I will move to approve the application, subject to forestry condition number one, and subject to the transportation condition that the curb cut be removed.
Okay. All right, motion by Mr. Gosch, seconded by Mr. Bissonnet, all in favor. You have your approval, thank you. Move on to item number twenty-two, ninety-nine Scarborough Beach Boulevard. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a new rear two-story addition with a basement level. The existing rear one-story addition will be demolished. Committee has a copy of the minutes of the June eighteen, twenty twenty-five public hearing, a copy of plan of survey, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and correspondence from ninety-nine Scarborough Beach Boulevard. I assume that's the owner. We have correspondence in support from one oh one Scarborough Beach Boulevard and correspondence in opposition from ninety-seven Scarborough Beach Boulevard.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person, no registered speakers for this item. I'm going to ask the presenter to present in the very late comments. There's an email from the zoning staff, and this may have gone to the agent, and they're questioning the accuracy of the plans.
Oh.
The survey plan is a very old plan, and the site plan may have been taken from those measurements on the survey plan, and so they've requested for a new survey in order to do a thorough review, and they have not yet, I don't believe, received that. So maybe the agent can speak to this.
Okay, sir.
From which staff is this?
This is from the zoning, from Toronto Buildings.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Alexis Itenko, seventy-one Avenue Road, Richmond Hill.
Great. Sir, I recall you were here before, and there were all these swirling uncertainties about your application, particularly as it relates to the survey. So have you seen this information from our zoning staff, asking for an up-to-date survey?
We did.
You did?
And it's, the first email came about, I would say, a week ago. We responded right away.
And what did you respond?
We responded that we believe we met all the requirements as assigned for the zoning review, and the survey is optional. And we received the second email this morning, basically insisting on that survey being more current. And we didn't have a chance to do anything, as we received them literally at seven thirty this morning. And with all fairness, what we're asking for is irrespective to the actual survey, because we're asking for the increased floor space index, and would that be all the survey or new survey? If you would mind going to the site plan, nothing would change dramatically. Technically, there is no changes to what we are proposing irrelevant to the survey.
Okay.
And we, if you remember last time we met, there were discrepancies. We fixed the discrepancy right away, we submitted it right away, and Angie, the owner of the property, who I represent today, basically, all this came last minute. So zoning was happy with our submitted zoning. We went through the previous building permit based on the same site plan for the underpinning of the property, and we went for preliminary review of zoning, and all this came after the neighbor is put his objection, and his latest email, which is on record here, went to the mayor and to the councillor and everybody else, which is, in our opinion, bypassing all the normal and transparent procedures. We reserved our discussion to the committee of adjustment and zoning, and I just spoke with my client. Her biggest concern with all fairness that the dispute is about, right now, is about a hydrometer installed in that space between two houses that might, in the opinion of the neighbor, impede his access for his vintage car to his backyard. The owner of ninety-nine offered to move that hydrometer to the front of the house. The neighbor insisted that all the conduits, instead of being raised two meters for any car access, be buried, and that the. two meters for any car access, be buried, and that 99 buries all the costs and any potential liability for damaging his side of the paving. And that's why the dispute is about the hydrometer, and my client truly believes that the survey, if we do the survey, becomes public knowledge. And the owner, who actually authorized his lawyer to send a letter suing my client today for the hydrometer installation, will use the most current survey as opportunity to advance his lawsuit against 99 for the hydrometer, which is nothing to do with our addition, nothing to do with the variance. The person has no knowledge. Again, we're trying to be very respectful to the neighbor, but there was a lot of dirty laundry flipped for no good reason.
Is the hydrometer currently existing, or is it proposed?
When we did the underpinning, the old panel was updated. The old meter was moved from the basement by Toronto Hydro and placed in the common, in the easement.
Right.
At the electrical code height, at the I height. That's what the neighbor is complaining, that this meter, which is installed by Hydro, might impede his future plans to move the cars to the backyard. So the meter is recent, installed under the recent renovation by Toronto Hydro, according to their specs and according to the code.
And you're offering to pay to have that meter raised up higher?
What we agreed to is to move the conduits up, the same as any parking access, whatever it is, 2.3 meters, and bring the meter to the front of the house.
Oh, okay.
But the owner of 97 is not happy with that. He wants this conduit being buried.
I understand. So Sabrina, can I just go back to, I didn't get a chance to read the email.
Yeah, do you mind if I ask a couple?
Sure, go ahead. If you can pull that up, I wouldn't mind reading it.
So this email creates some problems, and so I want to kind of put to you the problems that it creates, so that you can consider whether you do want to defer an application. And my fellow panel members will note in the past, I don't like asking people to defer because I feel like you're here because you want to have it heard. But I want you to understand what I'm worried are the implications if we do go ahead today for you to make an informed decision. With the zoning examiner saying, for whatever reason, that they're essentially withdrawing their zoning notice, if we approve this variance, and then you construct the building and you get a building permit, if there's some other complaint sometime down the line about a side yard setback or something of this nature, when your neighbor gets a survey, if they get a survey, you could be in the position where you have to come back to us because there will be an order to comply that you're outside of zoning, you know, because this zoning notice has been withdrawn. Do you sort of understand the scenario that I'm worried could happen? So I'm not saying that it would happen. So your only variance is FSI. It doesn't really have to do with lot lines, which to me makes the survey not actually that important. But it doesn't change the fact that the zoning examiner has said what they've said, that they've withdrawn it, so it puts you in a bit of a perilous situation without the survey. Do you know what I mean?
Totally understand, if I may. That's as I expressed, the concern of the homeowner of 99.
Yeah.
That the survey will be used against her own survey. And I spoke with Angie this morning. She said, for the construction purposes, for zoning purposes, it's absolutely not an issue to get a renewed survey. Her concern is that her own survey that she is paying for will be used against her in that bitter, absolutely unnecessary hydrometer dispute.
Sure, but you understand that my concern more is that even if we approve this, later it might be found that you're not within zoning because...
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, I was going to say, any private matters that are going on between the neighbors is out of our...
Yeah, absolutely. I was just taking that as a given.
Yeah, and the survey plan that was submitted is more of a sketch, and it is very old. And so the concern here is that those measurements were used for the site plan, but it's also the right-of-way between the properties. That's the big situation here, right? Because that right-of-way has to remain free and clear at all times. So it's, you know, I mean...
But that's not a zoning issue. That's just by law.
Well, when an addition goes to the rear of that, and it's still within the purview, what zoning is saying is that the site plan is not accurate. That's what they're more or less saying. So how can we do this review?
As a result, the variances might not be accurate. I think that's what it really comes down to. And that's where it circles back to our committee, is that it may be that we're not approving the correct variances, right? I don't know if you understand, sir, but what we're struggling with is, based on what I've just read from Toronto Building, is that they're saying that in the absence of an accurate survey, they're unsure that the variances that the zoning examiner has identified are correct or not, right? So it may well be that with a more up-to-date survey, the variances may change. So what that means is the committee isn't confident that it has the correct variances before us. So it's hard for us to approve something without that confidence. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. So again...
Couple things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The owner of 99, we measured that distance between the houses. And the distance between the houses, the actual easement at play, has not changed for almost 100 years. In his submission, the owner of 97 refers to the same number. So what we are saying is the variance, the easement that is not in question, the only variance we are seeking is for the floor space index increase. And we are willing, and we will, hopefully, we will, I am authorized to ask a conditional approval that we deal with zoning. We'll go get the survey, but we close this issue with the committee of adjustment for the variance. And if anything, nothing changes, because if you, if I may, on the site plan, the wall of the addition is in line with the wall of the house, which is on the private side, not on the easement.
Well, I guess, sir, I understand what you're proposing. I guess the difficulty I have anyways is that I now have a report from Toronto Building basically telling us that it would be imprudent to proceed with this application in the absence of an updated survey. So, I mean, the risk you have if you really want to proceed, the risk you have is that the committee may refuse your application on this basis, and I'm not too sure that's in your best interest. Your best interest, frankly, is to satisfy what Toronto Building is asking for. And whether it changes your variances or not, then you can come back with some confidence that the zoning examiner has determined exactly what the right variances are. I totally get your point about, you know, where the right-of-way is and all that. But the panel is at a disadvantage in the absence of having that up-to-date information. I mean, it's nothing to do with your neighbor. It's got nothing to do with the disputes. It's all about whether we have the accurate information before us. So it's hard for us to do that, give you an approval, if we are unsure about what we have before us. It's the same, I think we had the same uncertainty last time you were here.
We resolved that uncertainty.
I understand, but I think we also mentioned that an updated survey would probably be a good thing.
We did. We moved just to the discrepancies and on the drawings. And what the concern is here, that the political influence affected...
Yes, sir, I'm not going to get into that at all.
It is what it is.
And again, I think we've had a full discussion on this, so I'm going to close this off. I don't know if we can move any further on this one. Sabrina, we do have a speaker. Did we have a speaker?
The owner of 99's...
Through you, Mr. Chair. No speaker for this one.
Okay. I thought 99 was here, but no. So, sir, again...
Let's adjourn.
You know, my advice to you would be to defer. I mean, it's your call, how you want to deal with it.
I'll follow your advice.
Say again?
I will follow your advice.
Okay. I think that's your best play right now, because I don't think you want to get Toronto Buildings on your wrong side, if you know what I mean. Okay? All right. Panel, let's go into committee. Can I get a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
All right.
I'm very uncomfortable with us telling him what our advice is. I think he needs to make an informed decision whether or not he wants to defer.
Fair enough. I mean, I'm happy to go back out of committee. Sir, there's discomfort here about taking my advice. It's up to you how you want to proceed.
I think what the chair has said is very valid. It's very dangerous to get an approval and then not have the variances you need and be back here. But it needs to be your decision whether we hear you today or defer for you to get a survey.
If we have an option to defer, I would choose that option now, represent my clients later on.
Okay. Back in committee. Bill?
With apologies, Mr. Chair. I just thought the advice language, but that's me being cautious.
Ryan?
Motion to defer.
Okay. Second, item is deferred. Apologies, sir. I know you've been here a couple times. I do hope you get this resolved. It doesn't seem like an unreasonable application, but I think you need to get all the information accurate.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe the deferral is to go, to have discussions with Toronto Buildings about obtaining a new survey plan so that Toronto Buildings can ensure the accuracy of the plans, right?
Or Toronto Buildings actually said they withdrew the zoning notice, so it's really so that they can issue a new zoning notice.
But they'll only issue that once a up-to-date survey plan is submitted.
Is that okay, Ryan?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we move on to item number 23, 414 Richview Avenue. This is an application to construct a new four-story detached dwelling. A basement floor will be considered as the first floor. There's a two-car integral garage, a front-covered porch with stairs, a rear basement walkout, a rear second-floor deck with stairs, and two rear third-story balconies. The existing ancillary building in the rear will be demolished. Committee has before to copy plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revise site plan, floor plans and elevations, received July 17th. Redline public notice from the agent, July 17th, covering letter from the agent, an arborist report. We have email correspondence from the zoning examiner, staff report from Urban Forestry, and an advisory staff report from Metrolinks.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, as well as one registered speaker in opposition online.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, member of the committee, my name is Mehran Haydarli, designer and applicant from PM Design Group, 109010042 North Central.
Hello, sir. So yes, sir, we have someone who wishes to speak to this item, so we'll need a short presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much. So there is a change on this application that you already have. The variance number three.
Right. What's the change?
The height of the floor, yeah, first floor above established grade is 2.55 meter. That we changed to 2.17 meter.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, and so we believe this application, in this application, the general intent of the purpose of the city zone, quote unquote, are maintained, and the general intent of the purpose of the FSHAP are maintained as well. So do you want me to go through the variances that we have here?
It's your time if you want to go through that. That's great.
Yeah, so yes. So variance number one. So we are dealing with the building height that is 12 meter, and we have one foot roof plan, just the thick of the roof, one foot in the middle, extra. And number two, the maximum permitted height of the walls, we have 0.03 meter, is almost one inch and quarter. Extra height that is shown on the elevation drawing, the roof has no overhang, and we have incorporated parapet walls and architectural feature. And the wall height variance request is especially for accommodate this parapet design element. And the variance number three are explained, and we revised the variance. That is just the foyer level. So with number of the steps on the foyer to the house, it's changing. And this is not the measure things on the design. And number four, the permitted building lengths, that we are 0.27 meter more than the byla, and the actual building length is 16.52 meter that meets the byla and is full compliance with the zoning byla. However, the rear bay window, which doesn't have a foundation or extend into the basement, has been included in the building length calculation. And if you see the basement plan, the actual length is 16.52 meter that meet the byla. The variance number five, about the GF8 0.95 times of the lot area, if you refer to the project data chart, the total floor area is as follows. 167.27 main floor, 138.75 square meter on the second floor, and 87.64 square meter on the basement. And the total is 393.66 square meter. And due to the lot area of 475.53, the floor space index is going to be 82.78%. However, the FSI is currently shown as 0.95 is because of the basement is not deep enough to qualify as a basement under the zoning byla definition, and therefore it's being counted as a part of the grass floor area. If we were to lower the basement by approximately 82 feet, it would meet the zoning definition of the basement, and the actual FSI would be 0.8278%. So, and number six, that we are dealing with the side yard setback is 1.2 meter that we requesting is 1.06 meter is approved. Lots of the applications in this area are less than this number as well. And also the exterior stairs, so we have the wider stairs on the front that is minor, as well as we have 0.2, almost 2 feet wider than the byla. Number eight, the platform permitted is maximum platform is one, and we have the three. And again, as per the zoning byla definition, the main floor is considered the second story, which means the active deck in the back interpreted as a second-floor balcony. Additionally, we have the two other balconies located of the third-floor master bedroom. That is possible to merge these two balconies into one, therefore reducing the total number of balconies to two. And number nine, the maximum permitted area of each platform, again, because as per the zoning byla definition, the first floor is second floor, and the deck has a limitation, the square foot, that we have 0.52 square meter extra because it's considered as a second floor. And the actual deck is not as limited, because the deck can be 5% of the lot, so it's much more than this. But we have this variance because of just the second-floor variance on the main floor. If there is any question, I'm more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We have a speaker?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the owner at 417 Richview Avenue.
Hello.
Hello, sir.
Hi. Am I, do I have the floor now?
You do. If we could get your name and address, sir.
Yes. Murray Teitel. Teitel is spelt T-E-I-T-E-L. 417 Richview Avenue. I live directly across from 4... I live directly across from 414 Richview Avenue.
Okay, sir. You have five minutes.
As you know better than I do, the committee has to deal with four things. Whether the variance sought is minor, whether it's desirable for appropriate development, whether it maintains the general intent of the bylaw, and whether it maintains the general intent of the official plan. I would say that on all four counts, the applicant has not met the onus imposed upon him. And I would emphasize that the onus is on the applicant. It is not up to me to prove that it doesn't. Now, I haven't heard Mr. Haidari say anything that would show, that would meet this onus placed upon him. He basically walked you through the variances sought. And indeed, even though I don't have it right in front of me, I noticed that on the application, the applicant was required to say why they can't comply with the zoning bylaw. And the answer was simply that it doesn't conform to the architectural design. So, I would say that this shows that they're doing it backwards. They're taking a design and expecting the neighborhood to fit in, whereas the way to go about it is to take the neighborhood, the environment that has existed for almost 100 years, and make the design compliant with it. Now, it is certainly not minor. There are nine separate variations required. Some of them are really major in and of themselves, such as number three. The height of the first floor above grade is more than double the permitted. And even worse, number five, the floor space index is 0.95 of the area of the lot. This is hardly minor, especially in a block where the coverage of everyone else except two is less than 50%. The rest of us don't even get to 50%. And this means that we, while we are preserving green space vital to what makes the character of the neighborhood, 414 is grossly eliminating it. It's not only a question of is it major or minor in percentage deviation from the permissible maximum, but in the assault it carries out on the character of the neighborhood. Lower Forest Hill Village, as it is known, is one of the three most desirable areas of Toronto. There's an architectural beauty to the houses, which have lots of green surrounding them. All the houses on our block have a kind of character that consists of chiseled stone, leaded glass windows, stucco, half-tumber, timber, Tudor-ish look. And the overall effect is one of beauty that makes vacant lots go for $3 million and attract, for the most part, people of taste to appreciate this kind of beauty. To drop this thing, which I would call a mausoleum design into our neighborhood, is a major change. Now, the intent of the official plan, which the committee is bound to observe, is as follows. Neighborhoods are low-rise and low-density residential areas that are considered to be physically stable development, and neighborhoods will be consistent with this objective and will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of buildings, streetscapes, and open space patterns in those area. The building proposed is deviant, not only in the nine departures from the zoning bylaw, but also in appearance. As I said, it's a mausoleum-style building. I would even say French mausoleum style because of the two bits of fakery in the mansard roof designed to make it look French. It does not reinforce and respect the character. I see I'm running out of time, so I'm just going to get to one other point, and that is the height of buildings and structures. The zoning bylaw says that if a lot is located under a flight plan regulated by the government of Canada, the permitted maximum height of a building and structure is the lower of the maximum height permitted by the bylaw or the government of Canada. We are on a flight path regulated by the government of Canada. I went onto the Navcan website and saw that over 414 Richview in 2024, there were 20 to 49 flights per day on 190 days of 2024. So, in the absence of a clearance from the Canadian government, it is like the committee has no idea what kind of variance it might be granting. And it should not be granted just for that reason. There's also the...
Sir, I'm just going to ask you, you're past your time. If you could just wrap up, please.
Right. So, the last thing I wanted to talk about was that the zoning bylaw says that we can work together to make neighborhoods healthier by reducing waste, among other things. It's difficult to imagine a more wasteful exercise. The house that they want to tear down is perfectly livable and was being marketed as such. The materials will go to the landfill. They'll be transported. New materials will be created. They'll be transported.
I apologize for interrupting you. I think we got the point you're trying to make. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions of the speaker? Nope. All right. Let's go back to the agent.
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have one other speaker that...
Oh, beg your pardon?
He's not online anymore? Okay. So, through you, Mr. Chair. We did have speakers registered at 415 Richview Avenue and 416 Richview Avenue. They're not online.
Okay.
So, we'll go back to the agent. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you for number 417 for explaining. So, may I ask you to show the main floor, the revised main floor plan that I sent to the committee of adjustment?
Sorry?
Yeah. I want to talk about the main floor, the first floor height that was one of the big issue that we had on the neighbors. So, variance number three, the maximum perimeter height of the first floor above the established grade, that is 1.2 meter. So, if I have a main floor plan on the, on display, so I can explain. Next, please? Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, if you look at the floor plan here, we have the foyer when from entrance on the porch, we come to the house, we are, we have the foyer. So, that foyer that is a small size over there, so we seeking for 2.55 meter height versus 1.2 meter. After discussion with the planning department, so we reduced the height to 2.17 meter. And it means that this variance just working with the foyer and with dropping foyer with the two step, we have 2.17 meter. And by reducing this variance as an example, so we just having the extra steps from the foyer to main floor. I didn't hide the floor plan for the application because I want to clearly, neighbors and the public understand the request variance is minor and is not affecting the overall building size or the overseer from the house to the other property. And the main floor height is same, and we don't have the negative impact with the number of the steps from the foyer to the main floor. And also about the size of the house, if you look at the survey, so we have the, we don't have the side yard variance on the north and the south side, and we comply with the south side. On the north side, we have 0.66 meter and 0.99 meter side setback. That is, we improved to 1.06 meter. Variance number six is improvement of the side yard setback. And about the number five that has the concern about the GFA. So, as I explained to you, because of the basement definition, we have the 0.95 meter. And I had lots of application in the forest hill area, and most of them, not just me, all the application that comes for the committee for GFA and FSI is more than 80%. So, this is variance that is approved in the area, so, and all the houses. And the reason, because right now the bylaw allows us to have the three-story building on that neighborhood. You know, when we have the three-story, so based on the variance of the setback, without any variance on the setback, with the three-story, we are more than 80%. And the reason that we have this variance, because all the property that comes to the committee for the new construction, they are looking for the house size matched with the area and consistent with the development of the house. And if you look at the all project, the neighborhood is, all of them has this variance, and you have experience in the committee of adjustment for those variants. And, and again, about the height of the building, a concern about the flight, so we are just seeking for 0.27. It's nine, almost 10 and a half inches. So, it's not the big request, and there is no negative impact. And the only things that we have on the flat portion of the roof on the top that is more or less than the 50% of the roof area, that we are looking for 0.27 meter higher. And everything is a minor, and so there is no negative impact. The height that we have, having, if we remove the slope part of the top, so there is no negative impact to having that or not having to this. So, I believe I could answer all the concern of the neighbor. If there's any more questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Panel, questions?
Your question.
You've changed variance number three, sir, to reduce the height of the first floor. Is that, the entire first floor has been reduced, or did you say it was just in respect to the foyer?
No, just the foyer. You know, the bylaw, once the foyer have the 1.2 meter maximum height from the established grade, the rest of the house can be higher. And the number of the steps on the foyer just changing by changing this number. So, there is no, there is no impact on the floor plan and the main floor height that is sitting on top of the garage.
So, so is your foyer basically sunken?
Yes, sunken, yes.
Okay. So, you have a little, so you have a step up from the foyer to get into the main floor?
Yes. It means, for example, if I change the first floor height from 2.17 to 2 meter, we're going to have one more steps on the foyer to the main floor.
Right. Got it. Okay. All right. Any, no further questions? Let's take it in the committee.
Yeah, I find this supportable. I think it's a good proposal. I'm happy with the amendments the proponent has made. I think it's a home that would fit in with the look and feel of the neighborhood in that location. So, unless you have further thoughts?
No, well, sure. I'm, the variance that we've been talking about is the one that I have the most concern with, which is the first floor height. You know, the foyer is quite a bit off the ground, and it seems to be, you know, yet again, just to get that integral garage. But on this street, I was looking up and down the street, and most of the houses have the integral garage. A lot of them do have raised front porches. So, in this, in this neighborhood context, I think it fits enough that the variance is minor.
Okay. I will happily move a motion forward. I'm just checking. I think there are...
Forestry, too?
Forestry conditions?
Forestry number two.
Yes, thank you. So, I make a motion to approve the variances subject to condition number two from forestry.
As amended?
As amended.
Motion by Mr. Bisnet to approve with that condition. Second by Mr. Goesch. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Item number 24, 188 Pape Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by reconstructing a side basement walkout and to construct a rear two-story addition with basement. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on the lot. The existing rear detached garage will be demolished. Committee has before to copy the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, and a tree protection plan.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Jay Smith, agent for the application. My address is 2814 Hollington Crescent, Mississauga.
Great. Hang on a sec, Mr. Smith. Panel, does anyone need a presentation? Looks fairly straightforward. Sir, we don't need a presentation today. We've read your application. We're familiar with the material. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it in for a decision?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's go into committee. Very minor.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to take it. It is an application with, sorry, just getting myself straight on the, on the right one here. Yeah, it is the one I thought, yeah, yeah. These are two, two very small variances. It's a reasonable, small alteration to the home and keeping with the neighborhood. For those reasons, I would move to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Goesch to approve. Second by Mr. Bisnet. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Move on to, does anyone need a break? All good? Yep, need a break? Okay. Can we take, go on five? Is five enough? Okay. Five-minute break?
You can turn off your radio. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry. I am ready. We did have to do two more. We could say two more. Yeah. Okay. All the speakers, I'm sorry.
Very sorry about interjecting there on that.
Oh, no worries.
It's just my lawyer brain. I'm like, this is language that could get us appealed, but, yeah, I know, I should, I should have just left it because.
No worries.
The result was right, and you're the chair anyway.
Not, not as common at all.
Okay. You don't, you don't want too many of those.
Prevent and mitigate risk, right?
He was just trying to do what was best for him.
Yeah, I, I, that would be the first time that I'd recommend it, then of course, so I'm not. It was in his best interest. It wasn't in my interest. So I don't mind you, but I, you should be a little bit more even keeler, present the options.
Yeah, yeah, well, and, you know, this is where I get into too much trouble, but to me, like, the exact same thing with saying, this is what I think is in your best interest, is better than saying, this is what I recommend. It's just as soon as you do recommend, kind of, it needs.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
Can I say it right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was prefaced by a pretty big discussion where he had gone over the.
No, for sure. This is why I'm, yeah, exactly, and he wasn't doing, doing.
He seemed a little bit obstinate.
Yeah.
You know, one, the third line back, I mean, I didn't.
Sure.
But I do remember this, I don't know if either of you were on that panel.
I wasn't.
But I do remember this coming up before, and we raised the same concern. We suggested that a completed survey could be a good idea.
Yeah, well, and I'm, well, and I'm also, I actually think that what he's saying about these tactics of his neighbor and all the rest of it probably are true, but it's, it's not, it's neither here nor there. Like, you have a nasty neighbor, you're gonna get into it, that's just.
Yeah, and neighbors, I recall, were great.
Yeah.
Ready to rock and roll? Sabrina?
Yeah, we're live.
All right, we move on to item number twenty-five, ninety-one Bedford Road. This is an application to alter the existing one-story ancillary building in the rear yard with access from Elgin Avenue by raising a portion of the roof to construct a new skylight on the roof, also to construct a new garbage shed in the rear yard. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, nine photographs of the subject property, and Arbus report. We have email correspondence from Heritage Planning. We also have a staff report from Urban Forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is DeeDee Taylor Hannah, and I am a Houston Taylor Hannah architect, so I am the architect for this application.
All right. We don't have anyone speaking on this item, panel. Does anyone want a presentation? I have a question mark on this one in my.
Through the chair. We don't see member Bisnetz.
Oh, you got your.
Hello?
Sorry, just hang on a sec, DeeDee. Have you got your camera on?
I do now.
You do? Okay. All right. Bear with me for a second. I have a question mark here, and I, for the life of me, I can't remember why. Does anyone have a question?
Well, I can, I can tell you a little history about this particular home and sort of what we're doing to be like, while you think about your question. It's, no, it's a, it's a heritage home, and it's over a hundred years old, and we've been working with Heritage and the rate payers, et cetera, to sort of, to restore it. So we've gone through, we have two building permits on it, and our last piece is that this garage that we are asking for a variance in height, we're doing a beautiful lead-coated copper skylight to kind of bring it back into that kind of, you know, it's almost a hundred years old, so nineteen-ten. And then we have two columns in front that are brick, and we're working with Ron Holbrook. And so we put that on the side, and because we're a corner lot and the flanking street, we designed it in such a way that you drive into the driveway, and this structure's on the left, but it's really quite beautiful in Heritage. So we're really just asking for these two minor variances, really to, to address that flanking street and to make it as beautiful as we can.
All right. I guess that was probably my question. So you're raising the height, you're pretty close to the lot line. Is the neighbor on the flanking street, have you spoken with them?
It's an existing, it's an existing foundation and garage.
Yeah, I noticed that.
It's already existing. So what we did, so everyone's not just looking at, you know, basically a tar roof, et cetera, we're just making something sort of beautiful to look at. And we worked with Heritage on the side, and they have no comments on it, because as you come down Elgin, it's quite exposed, it's a long facade and that, and so, you know, from an architectural standpoint, and this is, so I've only been doing this thirty-five years, I really think it works with Heritage, the rate payers, and all the neighbors. Nobody said anything. We're kind of working with everybody.
Okay. All right, panel, any questions? Nope. Bill?
I just wanted to say, I've been on the phone, on this for about an hour, and I have a survey. I just had to say that, sorry.
Thank you for that. Phil?
Yeah, sorry, I might have just missed it, but, so the only purpose of this really is aesthetic, to have the skylight, because it aesthetically, architecturally is pleasing?
It is, and I think what's happening with a lot of these skylight garages in the neighborhood is they're doing that, you know, twelve feet, four meter, and they're really just boxes. And so we articulated with, we've got an actual brick that comes, it's got a ledge, and then we go and we actually pull another decorative bridge, and then we've got some lead-coated copper. So we're trying to do something that's just not a box, and so, for sure, and, and, yeah, and we're just trying to not just, we're trying to make beautiful architecture. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, that's fine. We're, take this into committee. My initial comment was only that it was, it's right up next to the house on Elgin, and we haven't got any opposition from them, and I was just concerned that, you know, the additional height might be something the neighbor would be concerned about, but it sounds like there is no concern.
Yeah, it's not, it's not much, much extra height. I suppose no harm in trying to do something a little different to be architecturally pleasing, but from a variance perspective, it's not, not that much.
It's glass, too, so it's relatively transparent, right?
Exact, exactly. And, and canted, so.
All right, do you want to move a motion?
Yeah, happy, happy to move the motion to approve it.
Forestry number two?
Yes, subject to forestry two.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gosh to approve. Seconded by Mr. Bisnetz. All in favor? You have your approval, ma'am. Okay, we move on to item number twenty-six, one nineteen Shaw Street. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story cantilevered addition, also to alter the existing rear one-story ancillary building by constructing a new cantilevered second-story laneway suite addition. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, received July fourteenth, red line public notice received July fourteenth, revised zoning notice affecting the sub, laneway suite received July fourteenth, seven photographs of trees in the subject property, covering letter from the agent. You have staff reports from community planning and from TTC.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers.
Mr. Perez?
Hello, good afternoon, chairman and committee members. I'm Eddie Perez. We're at five thirty-seven Rogers Road. As you noted, we're adding a small addition on top of existing one-story with a little bit of a cantilever. We're proposing a garden suite on top of the existing garage, which already has the setback at the front of the lane. That's what, it's already existing condition, and that, we worked with planning to gain some more soft landscaping. As you see in the red line there, is now at twenty-six point six one, forty-eight percent. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, panel. Any questions? So increase soft landscaping. Eddie, where'd, where'd you get the extra landscaping from?
Let me pull up the drawings. We moved the bikes under the cantilever, and we reduced the, you see where the rear second-story addition is with cantilever?
Yeah.
We used to have more concrete there. We pushed it back towards the house. If you look at the original one, we had, we had less green. Even the walkway, we made a little bit narrower going to the garage, to the laneway suite.
So you, so is that walkway existing?
It's existing, but we reduced it in size, and we reduced the concrete at the back towards the house as well.
I was just wondering, I mean, you, you know, you've made a pretty good effort to increase, so you're at fifty percent now?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight percent.
And if you look, if you look at the site plan, it's almost all grass, as you can see, just a little bit of walkway and a little bit of deck, back concrete deck, concrete patio.
Okay. Great. Panel, any questions? None. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll take this into committee. I think a good effort to improve the rear landscaping.
Yeah, now we'll move a motion to approve. We do have some conditions.
Yeah, so planning wants to tie it to plans.
Site plans, yeah.
And there is TTC conditions.
I would just ask staff if all five conditions is outlined by the TTC.
At the bottom of the report, they say it's one, three, and five.
Thank you.
Okay, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
All right.
As amended?
Amendment. Motion by Mr. Bisnetz to approve with those conditions. Seconded by Mr. Gosh. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. We move on to today's last item, number twenty-seven, thirty-three Kirk Newton Road. This is an application to construct a two-story ancillary building containing a garden suite in the rear yard of the property. There will be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property, email correspondence from the agent. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry, correspondence and support from no name provided, thirty-five Kirk Newton Road. We have correspondence in opposition from thirty-one, thirty-five, and eight Kirk Newton Road. So I have correspondence in opposition and in support from thirty-five Kirk Newton. Eddie, do we have a speaker on this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. We have two registered speakers.
Not from thirty-five Kirk Newton. Okay?
No.
All right. We'll have the agent, Mr. Chan?
Members, my name is Christian Chan. I'm the land use planner and agent for the applicant, and my address is Suite one three eight at one five seven Adelaide Street West, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, sir, we have some folks who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a short presentation.
And through, and through you, Mr. Chair, the agent may want to speak to this support letter.
From thirty-five Kirk Newton?
Yeah, because they're, they submitted something in opposition.
Oh, is that the one that indicated that they were surprised if someone?
Yeah.
Sent something in on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so perhaps they can speak to that.
Mr. Chan, I don't know if you're familiar with the, what's going on with thirty-five. They're not registered to speak today, but if you have any insight on that, that'd be helpful.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, I don't have much insight into that initial submission by number thirty-five, and I am aware of number thirty-five's rescinding of their original submission, if it was in fact them, but that's unconfirmed, so I don't have any much more to say on that matter.
Okay, sir.
I'm happy, happy to hear what number thirty-five has to say if they are registered to speak today.
I don't see them registered to speak today, so it'll be, it'll remain a bit of a mystery. If you wanted to proceed with your presentation, that'd be great.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So the property is currently being developed with a new three-story rental fourplex that received the committee's approval in 2024. We've also discussed the application with community planning, who advised us a few days ago, prior to the submission of my planning rationale, that there's no intention for them to opine or submit a report, and that no comments would be made. So the purpose of the application is for a new two-story, one-unit rental building. It's a garden suite with three bedrooms, so it's family-sized. The proposed floor area is about ninety-five meters square. The building, the garden suite will have a height of about six point three nine meters and compliant with the required garden suite setbacks. Just like to explain a bit to the committee about Ontario Regulation four sixty-two dash twenty-four, which has influenced the design, as well as the current garden suite monitoring zoning bylaw update. So Ontario Regulation four sixty-two twenty-four came in force November twenty twenty-four, and it applies to existing buildings or proposed buildings of up to two units in a main building, and provides certain site standards for ancillary dwelling units, that they are to be permitted to be up to four meters from the main building. In this case, we're proposing seven point five, and also the elimination of angular planes that are currently required in chapter one fifty point seven of bylaw five six nine twenty thirteen. So also, just in terms of the planned contacts of properties within the study area, boundary of the Little Jamaica Cultural District Plan, which references that there is, there are housing needs in the neighborhood, besides also within the TTC Fairbanks major transit station area, and also in Fairbank-Caledonia neighborhood itself, according to the neighborhood profiles, there's a significantly lower percentage of rental households in comparison to the city at large, where this application is proposing an additional unit on the site. And just to go into the variances, for variance one, with regards to the reduction in soft landscaping, thirty-seven point two five percent, this is an existing condition because the original multiplex proposed hard landscaping in the rear yard in order to provide for accessibility and support pathways and walkways that are wheelchair accessible as required by Ontario Building Code. And these walkways will, are constructed of permeable paving, therefore allowing continued stormwater management into the ground. With regards to variance two and three, because they are related to the penetration of both the rear and side angular planes. So the garden suite is proposed with no rear angular planes, which is consistent with the development standards pursuant to Ontario Regulation four two six dash twenty-four. And in this case, if the main building were to contain only two units or up to two units, these, there would be no requirement for angular planes, and in fact, the garden suite monitoring zoning bylaw amendment update that's being considered, in fact, today at City Council, is also, has, is also considering a zoning bylaw amendment as recommended by staff that eliminates the angular plane requirement. So the proposed penetration of the rear and side angular planes on the east side of the garden suite, as well as the north side, is requested to facilitate the three-bedroom garden suite, so they're suitable and large enough to be utilized as a family-sized unit. If the angular planes would have to be adhered to, then bedrooms number two and three would not be feasible. Regarding the variance number four, the height, so the height being requested is six point three nine meters. However, in light of the recent garden suite monitoring zoning bylaw amendment, city staff had advanced a six point three zero meter height, so my client is amenable, and should the committee decide to see fit that the height be revised to six point three zero meters in line with the monitoring zoning bylaw amendment update, my client would be happy to comply with the six point three zero meters put forward by city planning staff. And just to move over to the image that's on your screens here, this is a building elevation massing of what is permitted pursuant to Ontario, Ontario Regulation four two six dash twenty-four, in terms of the separation distance to the existing or the under-construction multiplex that could be provided with four-meter separation distance for a one-story element, and then a seven point five meter distance for a two-story element. And despite the fact that the angular plane variance is being. variance is being requested, we can see here that it would comply with Ontario Regulation four-two-six dash twenty-four, as well as what's being proposed and advanced by staff for the zoning by law amendment for garden suites. And if I can ask staff to go to the previous page, shows on the site plan how this plays out. So in the yellow hatched areas is what the permitted footprint of the garden suite could be pursuant to Ontario Regulation four-two-six dash twenty-four, as well as the garden suite monitoring zoning by law amendment update. As you can see here, that's in the darker areas where it says new two-story garden suite, you can see that the proposed coverage and area of the garden suite is significantly, or at least one-third less than what could be permitted under Ontario Regulation four-two-six dash twenty-four, and under the garden suite zoning by law amendment as advanced by staff.
All right, Mr. Chan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. I think we understand your position. We do have some folks who want to speak.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the owner at thirty-one Kirk Newton Road.
Hello?
Hello, hello, hi.
Hi.
I'm speaking on behalf, I'm speaking on behalf of Maria, I don't even know her last name, Caldas, because she doesn't speak much English, so her daughter wrote a letter, and I'm just gonna be reading that. So this is
Sorry, ma'am, sorry, excuse me, ma'am. And your name is?
It's Connie.
Connie?
I'm at twenty Kirk Newton. I'll be speaking as well.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just reading what the daughter wrote. Okay, so this proposal would deeply indirectly affect me and my family. A two-story garden suite in the backyard, right beside our home, would mean a complete loss of our privacy. The windows of this building will look straight into our windows and backyard, the same backyard where we gather, relax, and spend time with the family. We will no longer feel comfortable or safe enjoying our own space. On top of that, the building will block natural light from reaching our yard and parts of our home. Sunlight is something we rely on, and it's lost with change how we live day to day. And most concerning of all, this isn't a home being built for a family, it's a rental unit, part of the growing trend or of over-intensification that's turning our residential neighbor into something unrecognizable. Renters may come and go, meaning we could have different strangers living just feet from our home at any time with no long-term connection or care for the neighborhood. This isn't about helping the community, it's about squeezing more rental income out of an already overused lot. There is already a large four-story building on the property, and now a second full unit is being added in the backyard. This adds more people, more noise, more vehicles, more pressure on parking, and more strain on services that have already stretched. We aren't against rentals, but this is wrong, this is the wrong place and the wrong way to do it. Sorry, I lost by lying my second. Okay, we're not against rentals, but this is too much. It's over, it's overbuilding, it's not minor, and it hurts the people who actually live here. We're still talking about two-story building in the backyard, right beside our home, where we lose our privacy, sunlight, peace, green space, so forth. And that's it. Thank you. That's for thirty-one Kirk Newton Road.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions on this item? Ma'am, are you speaking as well for your own property?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why don't you?
You want me to speak next?
Yeah, why don't you just continue on?
Put yours on mute.
Sorry, just as a
Hi, can you hear me?
I don't need your name, I just need a reminder what your address is.
Okay, so my address is twenty Kirk
Okay. Go ahead. Is she registered to speak?
She's not registered to speak. But Marie was registered.
She wanted to speak. She's a neighbor as well.
Connie, can you hear us? You're unmuted under Marie.
Oh, you want me to speak? Okay.
Yeah, just continue speaking how you were before.
Okay, under Marie. Okay, just one second.
Sorry, through the chair, the current speaker.
Here I go, twenty Kirk Newton. My name is Connie.
Connie, could you just give us your last, Connie, I'm sorry for interrupting. Could you just give us your last name?
It's Connie Cherubino at twenty Kirk Newton Road.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you for hearing me out. I'd like to express my strong opposition to the proposed garden suite and associated variances. The scale of the project is enormous and deeply concerning. It has a potential to bring up to, I don't know, twenty or more individuals onto one single property, which is, which is what I believe is completely unreasonable and incompatible with the character of the residential street. While I appreciate the city's efforts to address the housing crisis, it saddens me to see the impact these developers are having on the establishment of our neighborhoods. A visit to my neighbor's home, which is Maria, the one that spoke before me, it's painful to see. What was once a peaceful, green space is now overshadowed by a towering structure dominated by steel staircases, and it feels more like a correctional facility and not a home. With the addition of the garden suite, the sense of openness, and it's completely lost. The air is lost, the sunlight is lost, the privacy is lost. Also, I just want to add, due to the recent investigation on this developer via the news media in regards to a tree that was taken down in Leeside, I just want to bring up the fact that this home at thirty-three Kirk Newton had two trees, and I haven't been able to get in touch with anyone to give me information. I asked the city to review and confirm if the cherry tree, which was, I believe, over thirty centimeters, located where they are planning to put the garden suite, where it's proposed, was that legally or illegally taken down as well? Is the city even aware of the missing tree at the backyard? And there was also a tree in the front, which is city-owned, so once it's taken down, isn't it law that they're supposed to put a new one on? So that's something I need the city to look into, these trees. And that's it. I just urge that the city fully considers the implications of this and review any related scenarios that may be essential before further developments are approved or considered for this unit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, panel? No? Thank you, ma'am. We can get our next speaker?
Yes, we have the owner from eight Kirk Newton Road.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Elizabeth Canoa. I reside at eight Kirk Newton in Toronto, basically five houses down across the street from the subject site. I am objecting to the proposed garden suite at thirty-three Kirk Newton Road, sheerly to the amassing with context of the lot, already having a very large fourplex built on the same lot. I understand the city needs housing in many forms. I'm not opposed to the garden suite, however, this proposed three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath is simply too large, especially when compared to original bungalows in the area, with most having only two bedrooms and one bath above ground. This proposal essentially is a single detached house, not the small, demure garden suite that typically comes to mind. I mean, some other things to consider with the proposed property this large, is there a requirement for a second exit due to fire and safety regulations? With potentially five units on the lot, how does owner manage fifteen bins recycling organic waste? Impact to on-street parking, which is already in short supply during winter, what happens with, where will the owner place all the removed and shoveled snow, told out for tenant access during winter? So it is something new in our neighborhood and new to the city, having potentially up to sixty units in the lot. But I think it's a lot of valid questions that we need to hear from concerned citizens as well. I mean, the other thing is, has the owner completed any shadow studies considered impact to existing green space, including the trees at the rear of property of thirty-three Kirk Newton Road and in the neighboring lots? Current guidelines for garden suite require angled roof to provide some consideration for neighboring properties with respect to shadow weather impacts and tree canopy. There's push to mass lots with requests for multiple variances. This seems to be rushed and anything but gentle. The guidelines seem suggestive by nature, allowing builders to push the envelope each time with respect to massing. I respectfully request the committee to determine its decision based on the current guidelines and defer this application requesting a redesign for a smaller footprint to conform with guidelines. Thank you for your time and consideration. I do would like to add one other point if time permits. Regarding the, I did speak to the owners of thirty-five. There was a letter of support that was put in. It was supposed to have been withdrawn. It was not signed or submitted by the owners of thirty-five, and if you will read their letter of objection, you will understand why. It was, we contacted Monique, who, the owner contacted Monique. That was escalated. The letter of support was supposed to have been withdrawn, and subsequently, the owner submitted a letter of objection with his comments on it. So I urge you as well to read his letter at, in length and detail. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions, panel? Bring Mr. Chan back?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've heard, you've heard some comments. I wonder if you could take some time to respond?
Absolutely, thank you. And I thank the neighbors for their comments. I'll respond to number thirty-one Kirk Newton Road's concerns. The first concern is regarding a two-story garden suite right beside their home, with regards to privacy, windows and overlook. So two stories, four garden suites of up to six-point-zero meters, and now with the garden suite monitoring zoning by law amendment, the six-point-three-zero meters are permitted in all rear yards that don't abut a laneway in all residential zones in the city of Toronto. So certainly, the built form of massing that's being proposed is in line, in my opinion, with what is provided both in the zoning, the current zoning, and also the proposed zoning amendments, building massing envelope. With respect to privacy and overlook, the window, there are no windows on the north and south sides of the proposed garden suite, therefore, the issues of overlook and privacy impacts are non-existent. The proposed garden suite also complies with the required side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and also the the separation distance of seven-point-five meters. So in terms of the footprint, it's well within what's provided for in the current Chapter one-fifty-point-seven provisions, as well as, much smaller as I showed earlier in my presentation, what could be provided for a footprint under Ontario Regulation four-twenty-six dash twenty-four. With regards to the Ontario Regulation and the proposed zoning by law amendment that's before council at this moment, is that a greater impact than what is being proposed is, can be done on the site and isn't? And speaking to overdevelopment, what is being proposed with this garden suite, along with the multiplex that was already approved by this committee as well, is that this is a development that's certainly something that's being encouraged by the expanding housing options in neighborhoods initiative through the multiplex bylaw, as well as the garden suite bylaw. And on top of that, there is a financial incentive coming from City Council that has now, as part of the zoning by law amendment updates, and a month ago, for the multiplex monitoring bylaw update, there was also a corollary amendment to the development charges bylaw that now exempts both a combination of a fourplex and a garden suite on the site to have five units exempt, and therefore, in my opinion, City Council's endorsement and encouragement of sites to be developed with multiplexes and garden suites to provide increased types of missing middle infill housing, especially in this particular district that's within a major transit station areas where there are stated density minimums that are to occur around the future Eglington LRT line, which is hopefully going to be completed sometime this fall. With regards to rental, as you may be well aware, that tenure is not an item to be considered before the committee, whether it's rental or ownership, and we're not zoning for people. We're zoning for land use. With respect to twenty Kirk Newton Road's concern, again, with respect to the number of, there is no, the owner spoke to density on the property, as I would interpret it, speaking to the number of persons that are going to be living on the property. That can vary, and on top of that, both multiplexes and garden suites are not subject to maximum density limitations in the zoning bylaw for the multiplex bylaw, as well as the garden suite bylaw. Again, just speaking to rental, there's a forty-four percent rate of unaffordability of rental housing in Caledonia Fairbank neighborhood compared to twenty-two percent for ownership, and therefore, in combination with the main building having four rental units and the garden suite as well, this would certainly contribute to alleviating housing affordability for rental housing in this neighborhood. With respect to the tree matters, Urban Forestry has reviewed the application, in fact, has provided a condition number three on this, which will be subject to, which, should the committee decide to approve, this would be subject to condition number three. So therefore, what has been done with regards to the tree in the backyard has obviously been reviewed by Urban Forestry, and they have provided their comments. Condition number three, I believe, is related to the planting of a new tree on the site's frontage as a condition of approval. With respect to eight Kirk Newton Road's concerns, regarding it, the proposed garden suite being too large, a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, the internal configuration is something that I don't think is, should be a concern, that should be considered by the committee, because in any number of configurations for the internal layout of the garden suite could be provided. The garden suite also complies with the maximum floor area requirements of Chapter one-fifty-point-seven, as well as the garden suite monitoring zoning by law amendment, which provides for a maximum GFA of the garden suite of a hundred-and-twenty meters squared. So in fact, as I said before, this garden suite could be proposed in larger form than it's being proposed before you here today. With regards for property, property issues regarding property management, I'm advised by the owners, they have property management, they operate and are constructing a number of rental fourplexes in the area that has a property manager that will tend to the site on a daily basis to address matters regarding waste management and storage, and so will be adequately managed. With regards to the shadow studies, I can understand the concerns from the neighbors regarding shadows, however, in this case, the proposed garden suite substantially complies with the regulations and development centers set out in Chapter one-fifty-seven, as well as Ontario Regulation four-two-six twenty-four, as well as what is being, what is before the City Council right now.
Okay, Mr. Chan, you've gone considerably over. Is there anything further you need to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I've covered all the points in response.
Okay. All right, panel, questions? Phil?
So you mentioned the trees, just, you know, that forestry has their condition, and that's fine. Is there a tree in the rear yard, though, or was there? Do you have any knowledge of what happened with that?
So on the multiplex application, there was a tree in the rear yard, and in this application, there wasn't. So I believe the owners did take down the tree. But there were no concerns that I was aware of that were made by Urban Forestry upon their review of this application, noting if there was a tree in the backyard that they needed permit to remove it.
Okay, so you don't know, so the tree was taken down, but you're not sure when or how? Like whether there was a permit issued?
That's correct, and certainly, under this application's review, if Urban Forestry reviewed it and noted, and if they had any issues with it, they would have definitely contacted me about it, and I haven't received any communications to that effect.
Were you also the planner on the previous?
Yes, I was, sir.
And so there was a tree protection plan for this tree in, as part of that previous application?
There wasn't any required as part of that application.
Okay.
But I would have been advised from Urban Forestry if that would have been required at that time as well.
And then just the other sort of messy thing that I'm looking for, sort of your explanation or thoughts on this whole letter of support from thirty-five Kirk Newton that then was withdrawn. I had seen that letter withdrawing it, and, you know, the inference is that, you know, someone submitted something falsely. Do you have any knowledge about this first email that's quite short that just says, "I support this"?
Sir, yes, I did see it on the AIC, but I was also confused as to who it actually came from, because it doesn't state who the owner is or came from, because it doesn't state who the owner is or what the email address that it came from was. But I'll take number 35's follow-up response to rescind whatever that was as, as fact.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
Phil, I would note that the forestry tree would require them to plant a tree in the backyard, right, to?
Yeah.
Is what their forestry condition would be.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think Urban Forestry condition three is cash and lue, right?
Or cash and lue.
Or, yeah, like to.
Oh, it's not a tree, just cash and lue? Oh, okay, fair enough. All right, Ryan, any comments?
I find it supportable. I think this is a type of housing and development that the city needs. I think that council has shown that it is desirable and it moved in that direction with new policies, so I believe it's very supportable.
Any further questions? I wasn't quite in committee, but that's okay.
Sorry.
We will go, so I, I make one, a couple of observations. One, this, I, the client, the customer, the owner is very active in doing multiplexes, which is a good thing. I would have liked to have seen when this came forward, an application which included the garden suite. I think it's, as opposed to having the multiplex then subsequently followed up with the garden suite or a laneway suite, I think it's helpful for the panel, I think it's helpful for the community to understand the entirety of an application. And when we split it up into two, it, it kind of puts people at a bit of a disadvantage, and particularly if you're approving the first one without really knowing what the second was. So I, I would encourage the applicant going forward that if there are plans to make a garden suite or a laneway suite and associate with a multiplex, it should be bundled and brought forward. I think that makes it easier for the panel that is considering the application to fully understand the complete impact. Secondly, just on the rendering that you submitted as part of the package, I think that's a little unfair when you submit a rendering that looks like it's in a park as opposed to a rendering which is a little bit more accurate and juxtaposed on the site that it's actually being proposed for. So just my observations on this, these are, when we think about garden suites and new developments in existing neighborhoods, the, the context of these applications relative to the site and relative to the adjacent properties is important to the panel. So a rendering like that doesn't necessarily, I don't think, accurately reflect the garden suite in this case relative to the property it's being situated on. So having said that, the variances, frankly, the variances that are before us are really quite minor, and that's what we have to deal with. And this, this site, I know people don't necessarily like seeing this kind of density in their neighborhood, but this is, again, close to the new Eglington LRT, so it's a, it's a good site relative to access to transit. And the, as I say, the variances that are before us are really relatively minor, so I, I think it's supportable as well. So who wants to, Phil?
Sure, to give me my, my chance to, to also say, I, I think, I think this is a very good design, good use in this location. I think specifically getting a, an approximately thousand-square-foot three-bedroom home of this nature is the type of density that is good to see, and, and the fact that it's a rental unit doesn't concern me. If anything, it's, it's good in this location that is right near the crosstown stop at Dufferin when it, whenever it, it opens. But, but the, the tree issue disappearing between the one application and the other does bother me, so I just wanted to make that comment now that we're in committee. I don't, and again, like you said, this is a, an applicant that does lots of projects. It's not before us, and so I, you know, I find it approvable despite that, but, because we don't know what happened, but it is, it is odd. Okay, so that, that being said, I would move to approve it.
Subject to forestry three?
Subject to forestry three.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gosch to approve, seconded by Mr. Beesonett. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. And that concludes today's proceedings. We are adjourned at 4:48. Thank you all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.